Now five o'clock, like to call the meeting to order. Michael, if we could please call the roll.
Right, trustee Anthony.
Will not be present this evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Clerk Seagrist is in attendance. Trustee, Treasurer Slavens is not here. And trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And supervisor Williams.
Good evening, call for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens. Snyder, I'm sorry Snyderman.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye, call for motion approved the minutes of the September eighth, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye, and now it's time in the agenda for any citizens comments, any public comments? Is there anybody out there who in the Zoom world has raised a hand? Or star nine us on a cellphone?
I see nothing.
Any public comments? Any public comments? No raised hands, Mike?
No.
See no public comment at this time, call for a motion for payment of the bills? In Treasurer Slavens absence, can, Michael, can you help me with that?
Supervisor, I move that we pay the bills.
Support.
And it was a motion to pay the bills as presented and has been supported by Summer Foster. Could we do a roll call vote?
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. First up on the agenda, item G one is a request for authorization of Care Russell and Weber's continued representation? In the Canton appeal in the matter of the state of Green versus Canton. Item G one.
All right. Mister Supervisor. I move to authorize a law firm, Care, Russell and Weber to continue its representation of Canton Township for the appeal in the matter of state of Green v. Canton Township.
Second.
Okay, in terms of a summary, as the board is very much aware, Canton Township received a favorable ruling? In the matter of the estate of Green versus Canton and the MMRMA, the circuit court dismissing all claims against both entities. However, the plaintiff has now filed a claim of an appeal with the Michigan Court of Appeals. And so what we're doing is asking for approval to continue the case with the law firms as identified. And we've got Kristen Cole with us, if there are any questions from or any statements, questions from trustees for Kristen, that would be the time.
I guess.
Yeah, go ahead Stephen.
Thank you, just Kristen, do you know when the appeal, do we have a date for it?
No, because the way the process works is the claim of appeal is filed, then the appellant has so many days to file the transcript. Once the transcript is filed, that triggers the deadline to file the briefs. So I suspect the appellant's brief, the plaintiff in the trial court, their brief would be due sometime in November. We then have fifty-six days, I believe, so that puts us into January. So we're seeing probably late winter, early spring before it would even be argued. And then just depending on how long they take to issue a ruling, so. Got a ways to go.
Yeah. Great job on the first round.
Yes, we're, obviously, we believe it was the right results and we're not concerned that the Court of Appeals would overturn that ruling. We just have to go through the process.
Seeing no other comments, but this time, roll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Item G two, consider approval of a consultant for the CDBG five-year consolidated plan, 2021 annual action plan and the analysis of the impediments to fair housing.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award the contract for the CDBG five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan and the analysis of impediments to fair housing. Wade trim in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a support?
Thank you.
All right, in terms of summary, the finance and budget department is requesting to approve your professional services contract with Wade trim. Perform the five-year consolidated plan 2021. And the analysis of the impediments to the fair housing as required by the key development block grant. We have Director Crumble with us to answer any questions anybody may have or comments. Are there any questions or comments for Director Crumble at this time? Go ahead, Emery.
Hi, thank you. So Wendy, I noticed the scores in the packet. Why do you think that Wade trim has the highest, I mean, there's a big difference there. The difference is zero, like let's say between them and some of the others.
So Wade trim has in the past done our, done this project for us. I think they still scored pretty high, I mean, they scored a hundred and eighty. They scored the highest out of everybody in there and they've performed this plan in the, in the past for us, they very knowledgeable, the individual who comes out, he understands everything and how we can potentially utilize funds in a little bit of a different capacity to think outside the box on how we can spend some of, some funds in the low to moderate income areas. We've just had very positive results with them and they, and they still ended up the highest score. So that's why ultimately they were chosen.
I was just wondering for the cost, you have like a raw scores, it was, are the numbers arranged in order of so like a nine would be the most expensive and a four is the least expensive?
So I was not in on the interview process for all of these, nine would indicate typically the higher the score indicates the better. The better price, so the more ideal results, so a nine would indicate that they actually had a decent price, not a high price, it would mean they'd have a a good price for what we were getting.
Okay, that makes sense, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
No other comments or statements at this time, roll call vote for the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Item G three is request approved managed ethernet service contract with Comcast.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award the contract for managed ethernet service to Comcast for a period of five years from the day of signing, a budget adjustment will be requested and a purchase order will be created in each of the five years to pay for the service obtained from Comcast.
Support.
IT services requesting the board approve a five-year contract with Comcast to provide high-speed data connectivity between the township administration facility and three remote township locations. Doing so will allow IP services to provide needed increases in speed and reliability for all locations. So right now we are wireless and we've had some issues with the wireless system. This converts us back to a hard-wired system. And I believe we've got Joe Kaczynski on the line if there are any technical questions on what we're doing, but essentially we're running hard wires or going to hire Comcast to utilize their wires. Go ahead, but clarification.
It's, it's not only the wireless, so we do have wireless connections right now at these locations. But it's also, we've had an old phone line and we've had, as I think everybody's aware, we've had some issues with the phone line connectivity for fire station number two. This will help resolve that issue. We also, I think this week, actually on Monday, we're having a similar phone issue at the sports center as well. So this is going to help resolve these issues and again, Joe's on the line, he can speak much more intelligently about this kind of stuff, but there's been some issues at Village Theater as far as the wireless connection and the phone lines at a couple of different locations and it's really time that we upgrade those. We did, if you recall, a few years ago, we put fiber in throughout the township where we could partner with the schools and get a really good price. Because the rules are that schools get a really good pricing on this, it's a state law. So we partnered with them where we could, or we could duplicate lines and put it through their conduits in front of their schools, but we don't get that same pricing once we pass their initial zone, so we, we don't get that same pricing. So this is about as cheap as we could get the fiber with AT&amp;T actually installing all the fiber at their cost. Joe's on the phone if there's other, or on the call as well, if there's any questions.
You meant Comcast?
Yeah, Stephen.
Sorry, you meant Comcast installing it?
I'm sorry, yes Comcast, I apologize. I apologize.
No problem, I did have a question, this looks great, I'm glad we're getting into the twenty-first century and some of these connections in terms of speed and I just had, so is this I guess for Joe, this is connection ethernet into Comcast's, are these going to be VPNed or something in the, in their cloud somehow?
They are point, I want to make sure I'm unmuted, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you Steve, we, they are point to points, they do transverse the Comcast networks, however, the equipment that I will be placing at both ends has the ability to encrypt the traffic to and from each location.
Okay, but it's different technology than the fiber we ran with the school district?
Yes, this is a service provided by Comcast since they already have fiber on the poles running past these locations.
Yeah.
And they already have presence within the administration facility. And we've been able to garner some significant cost savings by all that infrastructure already being at the three locations and on premise here.
Which brings me to my last question and Wendy, I don't know if this is something you can answer, but at the bottom of the RBA, it talks about cost savings with significant numbers there and I don't understand. Are those real savings or just avoidance of being charged that by Comcast?
The, the waiving of the infrastructure build-out, those are what Comcast is, it's going to cost Comcast to build that, those lines that we will not have to pay for.
So like fourteen thousand and eleven thousand and thirty?
Twenty-one thousand, yeah, that, those are the costs that they aren't going to charge to us, they're going to invest that to get the infrastructure laid out. Yep, and then the thirty-three thousand six hundred is the fee that they're going to charge, the savings over the five years. By signing all three over a five-year versus individual contracts with each of them.
Okay, they reduced our monthlies on each of them because we did five years.
For the three buildings, yeah.
Any other more comment, questions? Seeing non-call for roll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek. Seagrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye. Item G four, consider approval bid award for CAS sheet metal for the aquatic center roof summit on the park.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the aquatic center roof summit on the park to CAS sheet metal, five, six, four, one. Connor Detroit, Michigan, four, eight, two, one, three, in the amount of nine hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars with funds to be paid on the account number listed for the capital improvement plan.
Okay, due to the amount of money we're spending here, I'm going to go through the background. As an approved capital improvement project, CIP item within the budget, million two. The original summer copper roof is being recommended to be replaced. It's been leaking for a few years now and due to improper installation, causing the aquatic center to shut down on multiple occasions for repair. This roof has a normal life expectancy of sixty-plus years. In August twenty twenty, leisure services staff advertised an ITP, which I'm not really sure what that means and Greg can clarify or the folks on the phone can clarify for us, advertised for, oh invitation to bid the aquatic center roof replacement. The summit on the park, five bids were received, which were attached to the board packet. Leisure services staff reviewed the lowest three bidders with RTA to ensure all the criteria were met before interviews. Once reviewed, it was noted the lowest bidder was unable to meet the scheduled requirements, therefore disqualifying them from the interview process, the remaining two low bidders were interviewed by a panel of roof services and finance staff, as well as an RTA consultant. As part of the ITP invitation to bid contractor had the option to offer alternates to the roof replacement. It is recommended that CAS sheet metal is awarded the contract, the base bid of nine hundred thirty-four thousand, which includes the main roof and spire roof area. In addition, three voluntary alternates suggested by the consultant are being recommended. These include vented nail-based insulation with deck perimeters. Insulation at perimeter deck ribs and skylight curves and right raised skylight curves, bringing the cost of, again, to the nine sixty-three five hundred. We have subject matter experts online, which include our roof consultant as well as the president of the recommended vendor for the roof replacement. So if there are any questions, please look directly to either the subject matter experts or to Director Ollinger. And question, that's Stephen?
Um, Greg, I, the first question is, maybe I'm not understanding the wording, but are you saying the new roof has a life expectancy expectancy of sixty years or the old one did, or both?
Yes, both. The sixty years should be the minimum on a topper roof if everything is done properly. Really, it should be sixty to a hundred years based on everything that I've learned, but.
Has it really been a hundred years since we put that?
Um, just a little short of that. Been about twenty-five, twenty-six years, we've been battling with that roof since I've been with the township for seventeen years and when I first started in the aquatic center, it was leaking. It was not installed properly and legally, I know legal has reviewed potential recourse. That company is no longer in existence, so that's not an option for us. So really unfortunately, our only option is to replace the roof. We've tried new number of different patches and fixes and nothing has worked and it's kind of time to start over.
And I'm assuming that the issues or the failures of the past have been reviewed, so we understand what they are and ensure we don't repeat them.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why we have not only CAS who we're recommending, we've been working with Roofing Technologies Associates who does not do any insulation. I see that Bob Varner is now on the line, so he could speak to this. So Bob Varner and Glenn Parvin, Glenn Parvin is the president of CAS and Bob Varner is our roofing consultant. So he wrote the bid, Bob Varner wrote the bid specs and doesn't do any insulation, but they'll be on as part of the they were involved in the interviews and they're also going to be involved in inspecting the insulation process to ensure that it's properly.
I'm good with that, I mean, if they, if you think they have something to add to the conversation, I'd be glad to hear from them, but thanks for the explanation.
Yeah, if there's any technical questions, that they're going to be the people that are going to know a lot more than I.
The warranty on this, I'm sorry Stephen, go ahead, or Mike, Michael?
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I, my question was, I know initially when we were talking about the CIP in general, we had talked about exploring other materials for the roof. We chose to go with copper roof again. I understand that's probably not the least expensive route we could have went, is there what was the philosophy on why we chose to stick with a copper roof as opposed to go with, I think we had talked about the neighboring St. Joe Medical Center had a green roof, which I think probably used like maybe aluminum or something along those lines or a different material. Why, why did we go with the copper roof?
Okay, so I'll, I'll start a little bit, but if you're able to promote Bob Varner and Glenn Parvin, that would be great, they can also chime in on this, Bob specifically. Number one, the difference in price was negligible, we're looking at probably less than thirty thousand dollars. And it would be a painted steel roof. And the life expectancy of a painted steel roof is, I believe, twenty-five to thirty years, whereas a copper roof is sixty to a hundred years. Bob, you've been promoted now, if you're able to unmute yourself, if you can chime in a little bit with the answers as why we are recommending copper, that would be fantastic.
Yes, we, we looked at a couple of different roof systems. One being copper and then another being pre-finished, similar to the medical facility nearby. We had prices come back from, for both types of systems. And as Greg indicated, with, with the low bidder being CAS, the difference between copper and the pre-finished was very negligible considering the benefits that copper is going to bring us. And as Greg indicated, the, the copper roof is going to give us a longer, a much longer life expectancy. Actually, the, the pre-finish would probably get thirty to forty years. But we are looking for, you know, a seventy-five year, maybe up to a hundred year roof system. With the pre-finished, the, the finished part of the coating has a chance of, of a failure, it gets scratched up. The, the joints are going to be sealed with sealant, we're copper, we can use solder, which is at a much longer service life. It just, for the, for the dollars we're talking about, we, we just would highly recommend that we go with copper.
Go ahead, Emery.
Thank you, so I guess I, one question I have is, so copper is supposed to last for sixty years and this one didn't because of improper installation from what I'm reading. Now, does that mean just that in between the copper pieces, it wasn't sealed correctly or did the copper break down itself?
The installation methods that were used weren't completely inappropriate. Every detail that was used at the eve, at the rake edges, at the ridge, along the skylights, none of them worked. The workmanship was, installation methods were in accordance with any approved roofing details for copper. The submittals, the shop drawings that they used, they, they submitted proper details, but once it got to installation, they did not follow through with what they submitted.
And so along those lines, so you're just saying around the edges and things, so does that mean the copper can't be reused and you just would catch around the area? You would put new copper around where they didn't seal it or do it correctly along the edges? Is there a reason it all has to be replaced?
Well, also included are the standing seams between each panel. Some of them are not, it's a double-axe seam where they get folded over. And some of them didn't get sealed and then the horizontal seams were not sealed properly either. So we've tried numerous repair methods and none of them have worked sufficiently. We've continued to get water in. So the copper is still in good condition. So when the roofing contractor removes it, they can scrap the metal, which will be a significant amount of money. But they were told to include that in their bidding process. So they would reduce their bid by the amount they would expect to get by recycling the copper.
Okay, so it is, it is in the bid. So another question I guess I have is, I know years ago when they first were building the summit, they discussed placing solar panels. I mean, it was a discussion of having it up there or not. Is that still possible with copper roofs, is it weight-bearing enough? Would it, in the future, put solar panels or renewable energy up there?
I would say, I'm not an expert on the solar panels, but as, whether we can or can't, I suspect that we could. But to cover copper panels with solar panels, that would, that would be a, a question for, for the board, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I can speak to that a little bit too. We have evaluated that and the financials for doing solar panels, even though it is a south-facing roof, did not make sense at the time we did our latest evaluation. We are a primary power campus where we own all the power equipment on the campus and we're, we're paying an extremely low rate for power right now. It didn't make financial sense to make a recommendation to move forward with that.
Okay, but there is a possibility, just, I mean, as an aside, that roof could still bear solar panels if we, for the partnership we do to you or something.
Yes, if we want to, if, if that became viable in the future, it, it could be done.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments from the board, call for motion to vote on the item. Roll call vote, please.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Item G five, consider awarding bid for replacement of paired panels operable partition at the summit. For the maple oak room.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the replacement of paired panels operable partition to Urbans Partition and remodeling at one nine four three zero Gerald, Northville, Michigan, four eight one six nine, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars with funds to be paid from the account number listed, capital improvement plan.
Support.
Okay, this is another CIP item, this is the, the partitions that divide the banquet rooms of the sliding partitions, which if you've been over there recently, what's there now is starting to look a little tired, so that's what this item is, any questions for Greg? Go ahead Stephen, or Michael.
Are we, are we talking, is this going to include the oak room as well or is this just the two rooms over here? The maple and the chestnut?
Yes, just the maple oak room, now, it's not the walnut chestnut, so.
Oh, okay.
That one needs work as well, but this one specifically is the maple oak room. It's been on our list to do for many years and keeps getting kicked down, kicked down the road.
All right.
No other questions or comments at this time, call for roll call vote.
No.
Emery.
You see in the RBA, so thinking that there's a safety hazard, is it a hazard of falling down, is that what that means?
No, it's more of just sharp edges and also workplace safety in terms of moving it, it doesn't operate properly, so as it's, if you're trying to open and close the door, it's a safety issue there, but it's not a safety issue in terms of it's going to collapse on somebody.
Okay, good, that's great, all right, thank you.
You know other accounts at this time, roll call vote on the item.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Seagrist eye, Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Item G six, consider approval of contract extension with Ace Pyro LLC for the twenty twenty one Liberty Fest fireworks display.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize a contract extension with Ace Pyro LLC of PO Box two. Manchester, Michigan, four eight one five eight for the twenty twenty one Canton Liberty Festival fireworks display.
Support.
Okay, this is a pretty simple one, guys, where. The contractor that we engaged with, we had a down payment to lock in the contract with them. They have a cancellation clause and what they're saying is rather than. Hit us with the cancellation clause, I think it's sixty two fifty. If we renew the contract extended into next year with them, they will. Set tight and not charge us cancellation fee this year. That's what we're doing here. If there's any questions, we've got Greg on the line to answer. Pretty straightforward.
I have a question. If we determine, we're not in a place where we're willing to have. People congregate for fireworks around the time of Liberty Fest, would we still have the ability to, to, to set off the fireworks? Maybe to have a display even if people aren't on township property? Has there been any discussion about that contingency? If, I mean, I'm hoping by that time we will be at a spot where we don't have to worry about that. But I'm just, has that been, have you guys talked about that or? I mean, I like the fact that we're, we're just going to roll this over, not working, you know, and they're going to waive that cancellation fee. That's great, and this is a good package, so that's, my vote's not contingent upon your answer, I was just curious.
Yeah, as we, right now, we're planning as if Liberty Fest is going off in twenty twenty one as, as in the past, but. We just don't know at this point, so if, if we get into early next year and things are not turning around, we'll look at all those contingency plans. Which could include a firework show without people onsite. Or some sort of socially distanced firework show. Or do we look at another delay in the contract? But those are, those are all things, the good thing is the fireworks company is very understanding, they, they know where we're coming from, they're dealing with this. And all the communities, so they've been very easy to work with and I assume they will continue to be very easy to work with in the future.
No other comments at this time, roll call vote on the item.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist eye, Snyderman.
Hi.
And Williams.
Hi.
Item G seven, consider approval of municipal credit agreement with suburban mobility authority for the regional transportation smart system.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the twenty 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 one municipal credit contract between Smart and the Charter Township of Canton for eighty eight thousand six hundred ninety two dollars. And authorize the township supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Thank you, Steve. Alright, terms of background, Nankin Transit Commission serves the community of Canton, the mobility transportation program provides. Curve to curve transportation service for Canton senior residents fifty five of age. And older, as well as individuals with disabilities. The program utilizes fifteen wheelchair access connector buses to facilitate these services. The service area includes Canton, Westland, Wayne, Inkster and Garden City. Canton Township joined the Nankin Commission in August of twenty eighteen and continues to be the second highest participating community in the program. Only Westland residents utilize the service more frequently. But that gap is diminishing. Nankin continues to provide great service to our residents with only a minimal percentage of rides being turned out. Those rides tend to be last minute requests or requests being bumped in favor of priority trip for a medical appointment. The Canton Mobility Transportation Program is funded through the municipal credit grant. Specialized Service Grant and the Township's General Fund. In addition, the municipal credit grant thirty five thousand five fifty nine are received through specialized services grant. Which runs from October twenty nineteen to September twenty twenty. Combined, these two grants help offset the annual program budget of four hundred and twenty seven thousand. The balance of the contract amount, which is three oh two seven forty nine, is budgeted for and covered through our general fund, social services department. Are there any questions today for Director Hollenberger on this item? Or, or comments? Questions or comments for Director Hollenberger? Go ahead, Emery.
Thank you, so can you tell me, just because, and as an aside, has the ridership changed at all with COVID? And what are they doing to keep residents safe when they use the service?
We have seen a small decline, but not a, you know, early on, it was a larger decline, but things are kind of bouncing back with closer to typical numbers. They're doing masks are required to be on the bus and regular sanitation.
So they're sanitizing as people come in and go? Are they doing, so they're spacing people inside?
Yeah, and they're trying to reduce the capacity on the buses as well.
Have they looked anymore at extending the hours? That's one of the biggest requests from our residents.
Yeah, we have and we, the challenge with that is it being part of the Nankin system, it has to be. Do we decide to do it just for Canton, for the entire Nankin system and then getting all the other communities on board with doing that? And then where do we fund that too? Because. We want to do that, we would need to. Basically fund another full time driver for evening shifts or weekend shifts.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think that's still something that's important to us is looking at how we. Increase the ridership hours and also offer it's more than just the seniors and people with disabilities, because we have a lot of other residents too that agree. Use it, so if you could, still keep that as one of the, something to look at all the time. Thank you.
Certainly candid.
Any other comments or questions? For Director Hollenberger? Any none, call for a vote on the motion?
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist eyes, Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Okay, that concludes our formal agenda for this evening. Is there any additional staff comment at this time? Any additional staff comment? Greg, you're opening up October fifth, you've got the plans starting to roll out there?
Yes, we are, we're making facility modifications, we're moving a lot of equipment around the buildings, a lot of our plate loaded fitness machines are going to be located in the gym. Spacing everything else around the fitness center and then we'll also use the other side of the gym for fitness classes. Once the weather turns, we're going to try and keep the classes outside as long as possible. But yeah, we're looking at October fifth, the aquatic center will remain closed. Based on the governor's order, we could open the aquatic center, but we, as you all approved tonight, the aquatic center roof. And we'll be looking at the next, or meaning ideally, we're going to be able to award for the aquatic center tile replacement. Since where the facility's been shut down, we accelerated the pace of all of our aquatic center improvements to get those. Renovations done now prior to reopening instead of opening and then six months, nine months later, closing everything. So we'll hopefully be back to full operations early next year.
Very good, okay, any additional staff comment at this time? Any none, any board comments at this time? Go ahead, Emery.
Guys, what, so basically we're seeing our COVID numbers in Canton go up. Is there any reasons why we're seeing that? Are we seeing more coming from the senior centers still or is any, is it exposure, what are some of the opinions as to why we're seeing this? Does anyone know, have opinions? Are we seeing the runs increase, Chris?
We haven't seen our run increase, our volume is pretty much, we're still about two to three hundred runs below the time we were last year at this time. But as far as the COVID calls, we're not seeing an increase in COVID calls. And I think that that, that number has been pretty consistent as far as what you're saying is an increase. You know, there's certain cases that are continuing through the week or through the month. And I think that it's down a little bit from when we originally started, but I don't see a, a real big increase compared to the beginning of this pandemic. So, and if we are, like even like we, we did a testing up there at the senior high rise on, on the. End of last month and we had zero cases in that entire building there. Out of all residents, so some of these may be just going to the regular doctors and, you know, being tested positive that way.
Also, the other thing too is. The cases, and there's more so in surrounding cities than even Canton, but you know, it's, it's kids going back to school, college kids, high school kids. Parties and there are clusters that are being identified. But there is no huge jump in numbers, it's just sort of like a lot more people being tested. And with that testing, our increased number of cases and we. There's currently, as of today, Wayne County. Was given, Melissa was asked to work with Canton Township to identify a quasi. Long term testing site in the former Canton community. So Greg just became aware of it late this afternoon. And they're talking about setting up a site potentially to go through into March of next year for ongoing testing. So increase in the frequency of testing, that's, that is real, that is happening. And what a camp community is being identified by Wayne County as a potential new site location. So Melissa Dobb will be working with Greg Steen to make that. And that just came out this afternoon. And Greg, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to your folks at all, because I know it was very late today.
No, I just saw that information.
Yeah, so it was like three thirty, four o'clock that came over. So that's, that's breaking news, I guess. Any additional comments or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, so does that mean that the test sites you're speaking of, that means anybody can go there or has to be appointment only? What kind of sites are you talking about?
All to be developed, right now, they're just looking for a physical location and they need restrooms, they need running water. So potentially one of the high school parking lots. Or perhaps, I don't, again, it's first identify a location. Then the physical facilities will come in and it'll be Wayne County Health will be defining the what and how they're doing. And what I've been seeing with other test sites that have been set up in Romulus and other surrounding areas. Yes, they've been available to anybody and everybody from the public. So far, that's what I'm seeing, go ahead, Mike.
I got a notification that my internet is unstable, is, is the audio and the video coming through okay? I just wanted, I've been getting a couple of questions or seeing rather a lot of questions. On social media about when the ballots are coming out and I've been doing the best I can to try to do some education around that. But we will be mailing absentee ballots on Thursday, September twenty fourth. That is when we're going to mail the bulk of our, of our absentee ballots. We are, I'm currently at the summit right now, we are packaging in the, in the banquet room, thank you, Greg. And I saw John LaFeveron as a, as an attendee, so thank you for, for giving us the space. And in October, we will, the clerk's office will be open. Saturdays ten to two for individuals who want to come in. They can apply for an absentee ballot, they could reg, you could essentially register to vote, apply. For an absentee ballot and vote that absentee ballot, we will have booths set up at Township Hall. And then return that ballot as well, so anybody who's concerned about mail delivery would have the ability to do a one stop shop here. At the township and that in October, that would be ten to two, the clerk's office would be available. For anybody who wants to do that. And. Yeah, that's it.
Alright, any additional comments or questions at this time? Any none, call for motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Or.
No. Roll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist eye, Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Thank you very much, guys, it was our meeting, have a good night, everybody, be safe.